Rest I'll do this and then you can do the resolutions.
Yes, you do your part and then we'll go through the I'll read the resolutions.
In time here for me. So we're going to briefly go through you know, because they have a lot more information in the budget book that I sent out. This one's just kind of taking that and putting it into a summary. So we will go through some of the highlights first of this year's budget and then we'll kind of get into more of the actual expenses.
This is the most current because he sent one out this afternoon. I didn't get a chance to print that one out, but.
Yeah, or I'm sorry, that wasn't after.
Correct. That is, like I said, it's going to be just if you could point out what the difference is as high as you can.
There was the only difference was that there was two comparative costs added, so it is not going to be with this stuff.
All right.
It was just more information for you guys to look at. So a couple of key areas for the 2223 budget is that we are looking at a bill rate of $6.78. That's down $2, actually $2 from last year's mill rate. This wasn't surprising to me. I was because our equalization value has gone up 14%. Last year was 7. It's gone to 14%. Last year it was 7.91%. We are right on par with the state average. State average went up 14% as well. So when you see a large jump like that, any chance of your going to see your rate go down a little bit? So the on that, when you see that conversely, you're going to see your seat here. The foundation has increased. So we did receive a roll of 1.5 million more equalization aid this year. That's about 4.91% over last year. The revenues are slightly increased this year because of stimulus funds as well as that. The district enrollment has decreased by 78 FTEs since 202122. So it was pretty flat. I think last year we were at 276 and this year at 261. So we're going to consider that flat overall. The levy has decreased by 2.75 million. That is that this is due to the declining enrollment, those 78 FTEs. Last year we still had on the the 1920 square because it is a three-year rolling average on the FTEs. And that year, I believe, was about 4,500 students and that has fallen off. Thus, our three-year rolling average has gone down a lot. And then it also shows with them the decrease of the actual. How we're going to close that gap between the 2.75 that so we we decreased the levy by 2.75, but we increased our equalization aid by 1.5. So there's still a gap there, right? How we're going to cover that gap is with S or funds. That's how we've used the S or funds to balance our budget this year. There was no increase in per pupil aid. There was no increase in the base revenue. Remember, we're still at 10,000. Special education categorical aids will be increased. And as I mentioned, we will be utilizing S or two and three funding for the budget this year. We talk a lot about fund balance and we'd like to just go over some points of what fund balance is because I think there's a misconception that it's actually cash in the bank, but it's not physical cash that you can go get out of the bank. So these are just a couple of points that we talk about. Unassigned fund balance is the residual classification for the general fund. It represents total assets minus liabilities. The way we increase fund balance is when we have our revenues exceed our expenses at the end of the year. Whatever we have exceeding will move that over to fund balance. It's decreased when the inverse happens, when expenses are over revenues. And then the while there's no perfect answer for how much a school district should have in fund balance, the general rule is about 25 to 33%. And we have diligently been working to get over that 25%. Let's see in the next slide that this year we have last year we tipped over it a little bit. This year now we're creeping up on 26%.
Well done.
This is just the graph to show them. This is taking what I had said about the declining enrollment and just kind of showing you how we get those calculations. There's a weighting factor for each category of students, preschools, a half or 1.5. Those four case students are 1.6 and then kindergarten grades one through one through 12 are at a one factor. So down to 4318 on the three-year rolling average. And again, that down those 78 FTEs on the revenue limit worksheet. This is the revenue limit worksheet. But here is the link. This is the one that I had referenced in the last meeting about it's the most important document that will come out of our office. And again, you can see that it ties. There's a couple. It was there's the 4318 which ties back to the other sheets. And then again, you can see if general fund levy is down, overall levy is down. I think we were about 22 last year. We're down at 19 this year. Equalize up equalize values last year, whatever 2.5 million or 2.5 and we're up to 2.9 this year. So very significant increase.
Could you address the point about mill rate? That although it's good news this year, your concern may.
Yeah, sure. So you know, the the main goal for our office is to keep that rate flat year after year. That's kind of what you want to see because then you know that when it's sent out to the constituents and the taxpayers that they're not going to see those large fluctuations. One way that we do that is through our debt service levy. So the debt service levy is what we call outside of the limit. I am not bound by statute to only levy a certain amount for debt service payments. We can increase those debt service dollars that we levy in order to keep that mill rate flat. Unfortunately, when you see such a large increase in equalized values, you can only levy so much on the debt service to be reasonable. If I was going to levy enough to make us flat for this year in terms of the mill rate, I would have had to levy about $12 million in debt service, which is unreasonable. So while it's great this year that we're seeing that decrease, you know, if something were to happen in that recession, if we entered into a recession, then you would likely see that that mill rate is going to skyrocket a little bit. So we like to just have those conversations to let the community know that, yes, it is down this year where we are best to keep it flat. But if we do go into recession, you will see it increase. To that.
Yep.
This is what we are proposing for the funding budget. Then you can see that we have audited information from 2021 un-audited as we haven't finalized everything or enough final final audit packet and gatherers for 2022 and then the budget for this year. Most importantly, we are presenting a balanced budget for this year. Again, as I said, we are using master funds to help balance that budget and S or funds are done by the end of this year. My four. Thank you. This is just taking that information, you know, we showed in dollars. And then I always find that it helps to show the graph of how the revenues are coming in and where we're quoting them to. So we receive 70% of our revenues from the state, meaning the equalization aid that we received. 19% are property taxes and 9% are federal federal monies that we received. So you know, if you're a property rich person, they talk about this would be inverse. You would see that the 70% would be property taxes and then the lower percentage would be the state aid. Again, this is just corresponding with now the expenses and how we were how we code out the expenses and what the how they fall within the actual overall budget of the district. No surprise that the largest categories we have are salaries and benefits. And then the services and then the transfer to Fund 27, meaning that Fund 27 is its own fund, but Fund 10 is required to balance it at the end of the year. So whatever expenses are over from the revenues when it gets to the end of the year, we make a transfer out of Fund 10 in order to balance that Fund 27 budget. And so why that's why it's such an important conversation when we talk about that categorical aid percentage getting increased at the state level because right now it's only at 30%. You make a pretty significant transfer right around six and a half million, I would say, per year if you averaged it out over to Fund 27. So as that categorical aid percentage goes up at the state, then our transfer goes down in Fund 10, meaning we have more Fund 10 dollars to spend.
Across the whole system. Yeah.
Any questions? Yeah. We got resolutions.
I get to read them.
Yeah. You want me to read them?
You can do it. Sorry. Just do that.
I have. A lot of fun. All right. We have a resolutions. This is the 20222023 budget for the school district of Superior. The administration recommends the approval of resolution 22-06. The 20222023 budget for the school district of Superior. Trying to find out where 2206. I'm going to see it on here. All right, that's this one. All right, I will read it and then we'll vote on it. All right, be it resolved that the general fund, including state and federal grants of the 20222023 budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of $57,384,755 for revenues and $57,384,755 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that such expenditures be as set forth in the expenditure budget booklet dated November 1st, 2022 of the school district of Superior's 20222023 budget information booklet, which pages are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the prior service liability of the 20222023 budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $682,175 for revenues and $682,175 for expenditures. It resolved that the debt service fund of the 20222023 budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $8,747,651 for revenues and $6,725,672,319 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Community Education Fund of the 20222023 budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $106,532 for revenues and $106,532 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Food Service Fund for the 20222023 budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of $2,997,291 for revenues and $3,534,676 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the 20222023 budget is approved by distributed to the proper officials of the towns, villages and city comprising the school district of Superior, approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this first day of November, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I read the short one first. Next action item, school district of Superior is the tax levy certification. The administration recommends approval of resolution 22-05, school district of Superior tax levy certification. And I'll read through that. Resolution introduced by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior, Wisconsin, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation, management and administration of the school system for the fiscal year 20222023 and authorizing a tax levy to be spread on the tax roll of the City of Superior, Town of Oakland, Town of Parkland, Town of Summit, Town of Superior, Village of Oliver and Village of Superior Municipal Bodies Corporate in Douglas County, Wisconsin for the year 2022. Whereas the Board of Education of the School District of Superior has authorized a sum of $57,384,755 for the general fund, $106,632 for the Community Education Fund and $9,430,367 for the debt service fund to be appropriated for school purposes as more fully appears in the schedule of appropriations and in the budget of the same Board of Education for the uses and purposes therein expressed, which said budget is hereby made a part of this resolution as fully as if the same were incorporated in full herein. And whereas the effort said appropriations of $57,384,755, $106,632 and $9,430,367 are to be financed as follows. General fund from estimated revenues exclusive of general ad valorum taxes, City of Superior, 75.762325% or $7,949,306. Town of Oakland, 4.035072% or $358,598. Town of Parkland, 3.864469% $356,916. Town of Summit, 3.899067% Town of Superior, 8.930798% Village of Oliver, 1.215167% And Village of Superior is at 2.293102% $258,352 for a total Fund 10 of Got that right?
Yes.
All right. Debt service fund, prior service liability from estimated revenues exclusive of general ad valorum taxes. City of Superior.
Same gets the same percentage.
I'll just read the dollar marks. Okay. City of Superior, $531,382. Town of Oakland, $23,971. Town of Parkland, $23,859. Town of Summit, $23,472. Town of Superior, $54,785. Village of Oliver, $7,976. Village of Superior, $17,270 for a total Fund 38, $682,715. The debt service fund from estimated revenues exclusive of general ad valorum taxes. Percentages are all the same. City of Superior, $6,608,615. Town of Oakland, $307,141. Town of Parkland, $305,700. Town of Summit, $300,750. Town of Superior, $701,968. Village of Oliver, $102,198. Village of Superior, $221,208 for a total Fund 39 of $8,747,652. Next, we've got the Community Education Fund from the estimated revenues exclusive of general ad valorum taxes. Percentages remain the same. City of Superior, $82,996. Town of Oakland, $3,744. Town of Parkland, $3,726. Town of Summit, $3,666. Town of Superior, $8,557. Village of Oliver, $1,246. Village of Superior, $2,697 for a total Fund 80 of $106,632. Total general fund tax levy of $10,113,200. Total prior service liability, $682,715. Total debt service tax levy, $8,747,652. Total community education tax levy of $106,632 for total tax levy of $19,750,199. Whereas the State Department of Revenue has certified the following equalization valuations. City of Superior, $2,264,037,200. Town of Oakland, $102,132,100. Town of Parkland, $101,653,100. Town of Summit, $100,100,6,900. Town of Superior, $233,422,000. Village of Oliver, $33,983,300. Village of Superior, $73,581,100 for a total equalized valuation of Be it further resolved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior that the school clerk shall ascertain the total of taxes levied for school purposes and shall apportion the levy to the governing bodies within the school district of Superior. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Superior certify to the clerk of the City of Superior, the clerk of the Town of Oakland, the clerk of the Town of Parkland, the clerk of the Town of Summit, the clerk of the town of Superior, clerk of the Village of Oliver and the clerk of the Village of Superior, their portion or share of the said taxes and these be entered on the tax roll of each municipal unit. Approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this first day of November, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Lot of numbers.
Okay, so that takes care of the two action items for the resolutions. Do you have anything else for the? That would conclude the budget budget hearing. And with that, we move into the committee of the whole agenda. Informational items. Did you want to go with student first? Okay.
No, we'll go with Ryan first.
Want to go with Ryan first?
Yeah, it was like a fifth grade math lesson.
Thanks for coming, Ryan. I know you got conferences.
Yeah, no, it's all good. Okay, great start to the school year. I agree.
Do you have a slideshow?
I do. I'll stay pretty close in five minutes. Like just a great start. I think probably echoed by other principals that have been here at earlier dates. Common theme is celebration. So on this slide is like all 60 some members of my staff, including the cooks that feed our kids every day, the custodians that keep our schools safe and clean, the paraprofessionals who have worked tirelessly to make sure we're giving support to kids that are behind and also some of these experiences to kids who are at or above grade level. Because I put these people up there and I just want to say like publicly before the board how proud I am of all these people for what they've done to help us have some success through very talking about celebration. One of the things I've been using with my staff to try to springboard into like where we're at now is just looking at our data. And when I put that slide of those people up there, I think their tireless work with kids along with our families and things they've done at home have helped us get through this pandemic successfully. If you look at the left-hand side, looking at some data, before the pandemic, 22% of our student population was below basic on the state test. After the pandemic, 14%. If you look down at the third row, same thing with math, we're seeing less kids in that below basic category. So considering the disruptions of the last two years, I am just thrilled that that is getting less. The other thing it looks at, if you look at the second and fourth column, we've actually seen an increase in the percentage of kids that are proficient or advanced after the pandemic than before the pandemic in both ELA and math. Now, 4% increase. Typical year, I probably wouldn't be like really fired up about that, but coming off the pandemic, when I anticipated possibly going backwards quite a bit, I'll take it. So anyways, just to give you a little bit, lots of celebrations to start the year, but also want to tell you like our talk a little bit about our goals for this year too. We have two academic goals and we're very academically focused right now. And we're using data from FastBridge. I'm sure Kate has talked a little bit about that. And right now, if you look at the far right bar in English language, it's about 54% of our students are at the 40th percentile or above on the appropriate ELA measure. And the second one shows our math. Math looks a little bit better in the fall. 68% are at the 40th percentile or above. So the reason I chose 40th percentile is because on the FastBridge data that I'm learning more about, it's new to me. Kids below the 40th percentile on the national the national percentile rankings are deemed as some risk or high risk. So we're trying to get more kids into the low risk or advanced categories. That's my rationale. Talking about goals, by the spring, we want 85% of our kids in the low risk or advanced categories in both math and reading. I feel this is a robust goal. I know Kate was out at my building. Kate's here somewhere. I'll tie her into the presentation. She was out there just on October 20th and we kind of went through this and this is just the way it needs to be. I don't know whether I'm going to come to you in the spring and say we hit it or not, but if we're going to give our kids a chance at doing well in the state assessment and more importantly, doing well in life, we're going to have to make this a reality. So just giving you a little bit of idea where we're going, I'd be happy to talk on the side about some of the actions and things we're working on within math and ELA. You know, so that's all great. Like I said, the theme was celebration and I kind of went with you with the technical stuff first. I say the better stuff that you probably want to hear for now. It's been a normal school year. So if you look here, it's awesome. I mean, if you look the far left, we got a PBIS assembly. We reestablished the behavior expectations at our school. I know behavior and mental health was an issue across our district and we struggled at times last year. We were no different at Great Lakes. So really put a big emphasis on that. Bringing the whole school community together was just an awesome thing. It's kind of covered up. You see that big Coca-Cola bear? That was one of our PBIS celebrations and you know, we had some theme days and such, really made a big deal out of the homecoming. It was a nice way for us, the school community to celebrate good behavior. Field trips are back. I believe that is the school forest of my fifth graders. Another school forest picture on the far left, log and load. So we're getting all those normal things back that maybe we didn't have the past couple of years. And then we just had recently a trunk or treat. Another update is we have disbanded the PTA and we have moved to a PTO. You know, Brooke bringing everyone into the presentation here. She did a really good job of spearheading that effort and got that set up. And events that were just so much fun and so awesome. And I love the 80s outfits coming back with the old Buster's and Top Gun and all that stuff. But it was really nice to see that back. You know, like it used to be and I'm excited about, you know, some of the activities we're able to have moving forward. Looking ahead, I don't, you know, we've got our holiday splash store coming up. That's really a fun thing where the kids get to trade in some of the splash tickets they earn for work respect belong. And we get a lot of trinkety like gifts and such, and they get them for their parents or their family members. The idea is giving. I know many of our parents are going to get candle holders and some knickknacks that maybe they prefer not to have around, but it's a good thing for the kids. They love it. Celebrating service November 11th. We haven't done this for a couple of years, but we kind of tie this in with Veterans Day. We'll be having a fairly big assembly. We get some veterans from the Bong Museum. We invite like our police and fire department in and we just kind of recognize their service to the community and it's really a nice presentation, kind of a little patriotic too. It's kind of a nice thing that we haven't had for a few years. Winter concert, December 16th. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're going. I'm not sure if I missed anything. That's all I got tonight. I don't know. Any questions?
Sounds fantastic.
Okay, I just.
I have no doubt with the extra math homework this year that you'll reach those goals.
We have, you know, that's one of the strategic accluency. They just have to have their facts and.
Yes, that's good.
We've kind of simplified that. It is simple, but I think it's going to make a difference by the next step. Because math was a little harder to get moving forward than reading across multiple data points, not just the state test. So. Anything else?
Right for the record, I like your PowerPoint.
All right. My staff members, they would give me a hard time. This is how I function and.
And we appreciate all.
And I I have my own issues I got to work on.
You can go back to conferences. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, I have one more item that's not on the agenda that I gotta add. Our our student rep, Aaron, is here. We didn't leave you off on purpose.
All right. So to start off, football went good. We had a great turnout. We sold out on all of our tickets. We had minimal behavior problems while at the dance and students were students actually had a voice in picking out music. We had surveyed them ahead of time and then brought that in. There was a little couple of kids were not too happy with it last year about the song choices, but it worked out this year. And then this past week, we had Halloween week. We had a pumpkin pump, which was kind of like how we did Elf on the Shelf last year. And we had a couple of winners get cookie cakes. And this was during our lunches. We also had a guess the amount of candy corn, which was a Google for or we had like a base full of candy. We had like a base full of candy corn and they could scan a little QR code that went to Google form of guessing how many were in the jar. And then we also did door decorating with all of the advisories, which there was a pretty good, there was pretty good participation with that. There was a lot of different unique doors. And we hope to continue this with all the different holidays and stuff as well. And good feedback from the students with doing advisory challenges as well and saying that they want to see similar things as well. Yesterday, we did a costume contest, which we had a lot of unique costumes and we had a lot of entries as well. We didn't end up doing the hospital hallway this year, but instead we did all of the prior listed things during the week, during the days, to actually be able to include everybody, not just the kids who were able to stay after school. And then we'll be looking forward to new opportunities to help out in the community, not just within our school. And we have sent out a student survey that will be going through this weekend. We should be able to have an update by next month's board meeting with anything that we need.
And winter sports started?
I don't think that started quite yet.
I think the meeting is this week.
Something's coming up. Okay. Great. Good job.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. All right, and there is also one action item. Consideration of overnight field trip. The advisor's Pete Conley from the high school for a trip to Chicago, Illinois from March first to the fifth for an AP Biology Evolution Field Trip.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes your report. So we'll move into committee agenda, starting off with the Teaching and Learning Committee, which was Steve O., but I'll take this one. It's there's no action items. There were no discussion items. We had three informational items. It's three presentations, starting off with an update from Crystal Hinsman, our Director of Curriculum Instruction on Staff Development Day.
Finally brief. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what our staff development has looked like this fall. Obviously, we had our days before school started where we had a lot going on, including our family open houses, et cetera. But we've had two staff development days since, no, we've had one since school has started. And then we have one coming up. On October twentieth, we had a staff development day. Our teachers spent the morning during that time in what we call subject area committee groups. So at the secondary level, they're with their content area teams, kind of also known as departments is often what we call them. And then at our elementary level, those subject area committees are what we refer to as our grade level teams. So all of our elementary teachers were at Cooper that day. It's a nice big new space that people like to spend time in, so we've been gathering them there. And they're in their grade level groups. So for example, all first grade teachers from across the district gather together so they can do some PD together around some specific things that are needed. This fall, it definitely is around the shifts in our math standards and rethinking some of our things around math instruction and assessment. And then they also spend time going over decisions on things, maybe report card related standards, et cetera, that we really need all of the teachers in that grade level across the district to have a voice in and have some discussion around. At the secondary level, oftentimes in our subject area committees, those groups meet as a six-twelve group if they have something specific that they need to work on as a larger team. So for example, our six-twelve math teachers gathered together to do some scope and sequence work and also to talk about those same math shifts and unpacking some standards and expectations, just like our elementary teachers did. And then, of course, the teachers had a lunch break and then in the afternoon, they spent time at their buildings and the principals designed those agendas. A majority of the agendas from the buildings were focused on things around our safe and responsive schools work and our continuous improvement plans where principals are working on those goals they set with their staff and looking at data, kind of just like what Ryan described. And then on November eighteenth, we have another staff development day coming up. This is a little new for us to have two so close together. I think it will be helpful for teachers to have not that much time in between so they can come back to the conversations. On November eighteenth, we're going to start our day all together at Superior High School and have donuts. And then we're going to be all participating in a training about, about building resiliency through building relationships with students. The last few years, our community has hosted what's called a nurturing the Northland Conference. And several of our teachers and counselors and some principals and Carrie Saunders, of course, have attended that. One of the main facilitators or the main facilitator of that named Rick Griffin, he facilitates that and he is going to come and be our trainer on the morning of November eighteenth. We're really lucky that we were able to get him to join us. And then we'll have a lunch break and then in the afternoon on November eighteenth, our teachers will go back to their buildings and principals will design those agendas again. Probably some safe and responsive schools work, their continuous improvement plan and goals work. And then doing some debriefing from the morning on what we've just learned about so they can have conversations around what implications that might have for their building and the students that they serve at that specific schools. So that's a little bit about our staff development day and then we'll have a long break and we don't have any more staff development days until February. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris. All right, next we have an update from Carrie Saunders, our Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Carrie Hennessy, Mental Health and Family Services Coordinator and Jane Larson, our District Social Worker on Mental Health.
Jane is not with us. Okay, good evening. You'll notice Jane is not with us. I do have her permission to share that she was involved in a pretty serious car accident. She's okay, but definitely banged up. So she absolutely wanted all of you to know that she's happy to come back another night. I mean, she is incredibly passionate about this work. And, you know, with a concussion and such, yeah, she can't be here tonight. So I assured her that all of you would understand. And I'm just really excited to introduce Carrie Hennessy, who is our Family Services and Mental Health Coordinator. She has stepped into the role and really taken so much of this on and been a leader, working with our counselors. And we're excited to share a mental health update with you tonight. So can we hand it over to, oh, can you have the clipper?
Yeah. Thanks. So I'm just going to give kind of a broad overview about what mental health kind of looks like because I know that Ryan even mentioned PBIS and what tiered services looks like in Great Lakes, at Great Lakes specifically. So we are familiar with the MLS process, the Equitable Multi-Level Systems of Support, right? So this triangle, you've seen it, it sometimes is upside down, going from the larger universal down to the some and then to the few. And it's important to be able to use that framework when we also think about mental health and what that means, right? So when we talk about mental health, it is something that we all have. So that is a universal need. Everyone in this room has mental health. Some people might have some struggles with it at times. So they might need to trap it or tap into some of those some supports and interventions, or even a few of our students might need more intensive support. So we're going to talk a little bit about that.
So we have this graphic for you and I'll try and do whatever.
Perfect. So you can kind of see that this chart shows elementary, middle and high school. And it's that same language, all students at that universal level, some students and then few students, what they're able to receive. So all students are receiving guidance and that's through counselors to be able to work with all of our elementary students through all of our schools to be able to do some learning and then include second step in the classroom. So that's our social emotional learning curriculum that supports empathy, emotion regulation, problem solving, and being able to work through career awareness and then also being able to just identify who they are and how they fit into the world with other human beings, right? It's something that we want for all of us to be able to do. Middle school, at that level, you can see that the bar is, bar eye time lessons are built into the day as along with second step and advisory. High school, you can see bar eye time lessons is there as well. And that is something that's been in place a little bit longer than at the middle school.
So yeah, sixth grade bar is universal, all sixth graders at the middle school and then all ninth graders at the high school.
And then when we look at some, so that's going to be some of those intervention pieces. And you can see it for a small group with counselors and then also social workers. At the elementary, our social worker focuses on transparency prevention. And that is to be able to identify and support family, reducing needs and barriers that might come up for individual kiddos because we want them at school. We want them to be able to access their learning. And so that's a big piece of providing mental health support, right? Also having at the middle school and high school, those counselors and social workers. Middle school has started, has started using check and connect as well. So I've had the opportunity to be able to meet those mentors and they're phenomenal. They are doing phenomenal work to be able to get to know some of our kiddos and be able to do a check-in and to be able to connect with them, to be able to find out a little bit more about what's getting in the way, overcoming some of those obstacles so that they can simply be able to support their learning. And then the same thing with at the high school level. And when we look for the small groups for counselors and social workers and then for some students, that's more of that one-on-one support. Or intensified small group, depending on the needs for the kid, right? Yep.
Okay, I just want to talk a little bit about Sabers. It is a product of, you just jumped in at any point. It's part of the FastBridge Progress Monitoring Assessment Suite that we switched over to. Social, Academic, Emotional Behavior Rating Scale. So it sounds really fancy. Basically, it's a universal screening tool that it's used to identify student risk for general, social, academic, and then emotional behaviors. The big, big purpose of this, it's twofold, but primarily schools are going to use that school-wide data for decision-making around the collective student performance at that tier one level. So everyone is getting the counseling. Everyone is getting the second step. How are we doing? What does, what does our data look like? You know, if we're seeing some issues with that, we might have to go back and, you know, talk about second step counseling. Like, do we need to tweak or adjust anything? Are we following the scope and sequence? And then we could use individual student data to indicate students who may need additional support. So that will help us make sure that we're serving the right students in our small groups that we have throughout the building.
Is this done once a year?
So I'll get into, that's a great, no, no, that's a great question. I think I have it on here. So just like our math and our reading, the plan right now is to do it three times a year. We're, this is brand new. We are working through, we might only do it two times a year, but for sure, for sure, two times a year. The math and the reading is done three times a year.
I just noticed with, I asked because I noticed the questions that I looked at from my kids. I know sometimes it can change even based on the time of year or
The day.
The day. It really can. And then my second graders was like, are they even going to understand this?
Yeah, it was really exciting just, just to see what we learned.
Yeah.
It's one piece of data. It's a snapshot, one day, right? Like, you know, we, so we have to ask questions. That's just the first thing that we look at. And then, you know, if it really doesn't go along with what we're seeing, we would use, of course, other data sources. So it does involve a teacher rating scale for all students, K through twelve. Takes about three minutes per student and it is pretty basic. Kate, nineteen questions?
Yeah. The teacher rating scale is nineteen questions. And I think some of it, you know, it's some kids pretty straightforward and other kids, there may be some where you pause and have to think a little bit more. And obviously, our teachers know their kids really well, which makes this, you know, appropriate if we don't, you know, we're not doing this on five hundred kids at a time. And I think that's the power of all of the relationship building and all of the work that we've done to really get to know kids.
Absolutely. And of course, we were intentional and, you know, we started this assessment just like two weeks ago. So, you know, we wouldn't do this the first few weeks of school. We want to build the relationships and get to know the kids. The math and the reading is done earlier in the year. So that wouldn't be, you know, welcome to the classroom. I'm just meeting you and now I'm going to fill out this rating scale. Nope, they've had time to really develop and get to know each other. The students would do their rating scale beginning in second grade, so second through twelfth grade. They say fifteen minutes is the most that they would need for that. And those two sources of information are used to determine interventions and supports that kids might need. Legal notifications. All parents received a letter describing Sabers and were provided instructions for opting their student out of the self-assessment, which is called My Sabers. That's a lot of information, but it's important because it's brand new and it will be good to see what the data shows us.
And ours were provided the actual survey upfront to, you didn't have to request it, which was really nice as a parent, just because you could see it without, you know.
It alleviates some of the like questions that you have as a parent, like, well, what are they going to ask? Yeah, definitely. Okay. So we want to talk about some additional programs and services that we offer in select schools. The Hope Squad, I'm not sure if you all have had an opportunity to learn about this, but it is a phenomenal peer-to-peer program that I believe was implemented last school year. So Jane, with a mental health grant, had trained a selected group of students, like they had to apply and have parent permission to be basically peer supports for their peers who, you know, were struggling and needing some support. Maybe, you know, just feeling depressed. And when you go to the high school, you can see, at least for sure last year, plastered all over was a number that they could reach out to for help. When I was there, I would see the Hope Squad in the cafeteria set up, just put on a weirdness piece. They have sweatshirts. And so just kind of getting that word out that you don't always have to go to an adult. Like you, there is a cluster of peers that were safe for you to talk to. So I think that's really exciting that we have that. And then there's been a lot of work with staff training regarding youth mental health, first aid. And that is a training. It's six hours. Really is just for anyone who works with youth. They should really have this training. We were at a training with our food service staff and they were so appreciative to have the training, to be invited because you know what? They see the kids every single day and sometimes they know more than we do, especially at the high school level, when you're going, you know, to so many different classes. I mean, the number of thank yous that we received, like they just really, really appreciated that. So we have had counselors, social workers, the school nurses, administrators, the high school teachers. It's offered throughout the year. So proud that we have that support too.
You want to talk about what we did?
Absolutely. So elementary counselors, we were able to come together with support from NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. There is a local group that includes Douglas County and then also part of Ashland that we kind of scooped up here recently to be able to show additional support to our neighbors, right? But then also the state level. So this actually was a training that was brought to us from the state level of NAMI. And they came in to be able to train all of the elementary counselors on mental health chats. So it wasn't like new profound information that counselors didn't know about mental health, right? However, it was organized in a way that was able to be condensed into a lesson to be able to talk a little bit about what mental health is, how we can encourage that mental health. Again, that's not that mental illness, but that mental health. And so that information is going to be shared out with families as the time approaches. Each school, it looks a little bit different because, you know, each school looks a little bit different. But January, February time is when they're going to be able to introduce some of the work to de-stigmatize some of that mental illness through having positive interactions and coping strategies and really focusing in on that. And then the last one, the last little point there you can see is the representation from the School District of Superior and UWS and NAMI, that partnership amongst community members to be able to come together, to be able to do a suicide prevention and facilitating suicide bereavement support groups for children and teens. And that's super powerful. And I want to break that like long definition of what it was, the training was apart because it wasn't just support groups for suicide bereavement. It was understanding like support groups and how that can look from a more broader perspective, not just for teens, but also how that might be in children. But how it might also then carry over into additional supports for family members as well. And then it also talks about bereavement for suicide, but also specifically, we could pull that apart and talk about bereavement in general. So loss and grief and what that looks like. And so the information that was presented by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention was phenomenal. So as I stand here with a master's degree in school counseling and mental health and like the experience that I have, there was so much learning that was still able to occur in there and it was fantastic. So I really do appreciate that we were able to pull together, not only as a district, but with some community members. So I really do appreciate that we were able to pull together, not only as a district, but with some community members as well. So Jasmine Haraldson on NAMI, but also part of the school district. Jean Larson, our high school social worker, myself, and then we had some members of UWS and NAMI to be able to join too. So it was really great. NAMI helped support getting us there. So our partnership with organizations outside of the district has become a really important piece to be able to continue to encourage. Strengthening what we already have, right? That's the goal. So our community partnerships, again, so that's a big piece of what I'm talking about. And it's using some of the local agencies that are established or re-establishing, especially as we're coming through the pandemic and what that looks like for mental health and the crisis that is developing across our nation. But we have done additional support to strengthen those resources as it has to be redefined a little bit, right? There's more virtual options, but then there's also how do we get everybody back into the schools? How does that look? How do we develop that? And so being able to make sure that we continue to strengthen those. And there's some familiar supports there. CASDA, SOAR, who is pushing into Northern Lights and Cooper, along with middle school and high school, and they are a therapeutic agency. We have LSCHC, who is struggling with hiring some therapists and getting some quality therapist providers at the moment. But that's in the result of what has been happening throughout the last couple of years. But they are now looking at being able to get back into supporting our schools a little bit more clearly here in the next few months, which is really exciting. And then Northwest Journey, still collaborating with them. And then the Encouragement Clinic, which has new this school year in coming into our schools and being able to support for kind of a short-term skill-building, mental health support. So they also are able to provide some support without insurance due to the collaboration that they have done with the city and some of the grant writing that they've done. So again, that collaboration with these organizations is key and it's super exciting to be able to be part of that process. Carrie Bottom, oh, sorry.
As you talk about that, my, the feedback I continue to get from counselors and principals is it seems like a lot of partnerships, but there's limited availability and you can see not all schools are necessarily getting all the same level of support. So, yeah, it looks like a lot of partnerships. Is it safe to say that not all of the student demand is being met because of lack of services?
Yeah. And as we have seen that increase of need for students, like, that's definitely difficult. And of course, the referral process is still six to 12 months out for some of the organizations. And so I know I am pretty optimistic and like excited about the collaborations because they're there. However, we need stronger and more and we need individuals to want to work in these clinics. We want individuals to be able to want to stay in our community, to be able to strengthen our mental health support for our kids. So those are important.
Let's get those reimbursement rates raised.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's not much incentive to the provider in Wisconsin. I mean, the, the, being so close to Minnesota, yeah.
Especially driving out to the country schools too. They're even harder pressed.
Yeah, yeah. It's really.
To kind of piggyback on those two, during the board visits, we made a point to talk about mental health and resources in the schools at every school we went to. And the big, I think I hope for me and Brooke can probably attest to it too. The elementary level, it wasn't equal across the board by any means. Yeah, one school might have had a, a couple of these resources. One school was struggling just to have one of them.
Based on the agency, yeah.
It seemed like all the schools had to, I guess, apply or contract their own. It's not maybe district-wide contracting for each of these resources per school. In like driving for corners like Superior, which are non-built hours, people are going to drive 20, 25 minutes. So they're not going to do it, you know, so it's.
You do have a district-wide agreement with all of these agencies and I'll use SOAR as an example. SOAR used to be available in all of our, all of our buildings, however, they filled up. And so if, if a student, for example, at Bryant has needs, they can't access SOAR now because SOAR is full. That makes sense. So they all had access, but because of the limited availability of some of the agencies or the lack of therapists, they've lost some therapists across some of these. Not all schools have the same access now.
Right. So I guess the question is, how, how do we get all the elementary schools to have the same access or at least the same chance?
Really, it's from my perspective is the agencies don't have the capacity to serve all of our schools. That's my understanding, looking at Carrie.
Because it's reflected in our community too. I mean, it's not just who's able to come into the schools, but also what's available outside of the schools as well, right, and accessible. And the bottom line, like you said, we don't have access to quality therapists who are able to come over and prefer to work on the side of the bridge.
If the travel time, you know, is an issue, and I mean, we do work closely with the school counselors. Definitely, they're not off on their own to just figure out who they're going to partner with. But we could definitely do the telehealth, which the younger students at the elementary level can definitely do that. They know how to work this technology better than us and we wouldn't leave them in a room alone to connect with the provider. Like, there would be, you know, the counselor, someone in close proximity, but that is definitely something that we can talk about with the counseling group and with these MOUs that we have with these different agencies. In the dream world, we would have agencies like knocking on our door, wanting to partner, especially at the, the schools that are, yeah, 25-minute drive time. That, that is a billable time. So we have to get creative and we're very lucky to have Carrie because now we do have more of a coordinated process and, you know, starting at the, the district level and just more support to free the counselors up a little bit.
Would you say some of these partnerships, they spend more time in one school that there's not time to get to the rest? Or?
I think that it has a little bit more to do with, like, the therapists training themselves as well and how, who they work with. So there's more at the middle and the high school level more consistently. Whereas I think it's difficult to be able to have access to both mental health for.
I think what's important to understand is these folks are, don't have like offices up in our schools. So, for example, students who might access SOAR at Cooper, they had a specific referral that went directly from that family to that agency and they are just able to access those services while at school at Cooper. So all the services you see for like SOAR and Lake Superior Community Health Center, those are specific referrals that families have specifically requested. So just so people understand, like, they don't have office hours like Monday and Wednesday where they can just work with kids. Those are set up specifically with kids and families who've requested those services. That makes sense.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're almost done. So we thought, like, do you want to introduce something that I can talk about a little?
So AODA, like, okay, this is part of our mental health contribution to be able to understand because there is such high rate of homogeneity between mental health and alcohol and other drug abuse. And so it's important to be able to at least give a little bit of time and awareness of what that looks like so that we can address that this is a need. Alcohol and drug use can be a maladaptive response to needs to manage our emotions, right? Or things that we're moving through. And being able to provide opportunities to learn additional coping mechanisms and strategies is super important at the educational level, right? And then it also is a way to be able to offer prevention, right? So you want to talk a little bit about the different levels?
Yeah. So, you know, at the elementary, really, the preventative measure is built, it's embedded within our second step curriculum. So the skill building and like the refusal skills, just that's, that's kind of general what's happening at the elementary level. Superior Middle School, we have our social worker and then myself are trained in in-depth and something called Not on Tobacco. In-depth is something that students would be referred to when they are found to be vaping, okay? So instead of getting a ticket or getting suspended, it's an alternative to that. So they, it's a mandatory, like, required program that they go through typically like six sessions. And once they complete that, then, then they are, they get signed off and they wouldn't get a ticket or have any other kind of punitive measures because they, they went through in-depth, which is part of American Lung Association. The other program, Not on Tobacco, is a self-referral and it's a tobacco cessation program. So it's highly effective. There are students who request it. That group is not up and running yet at the middle school, but we do have it at the high school. And Jane did that with, I think she said seven students last school year, the, the Not on Tobacco. The in-depth, we can't even get through all the kids because, I mean, it's, it's an issue. So we have to get more people trained and have, have more of the in-depth courses that we're doing. We're plugging away at, at that. So those are free programs offered through American Lung Association. And it's really, really, they're, they're good.
Again, yes, last slide, there's a lot of information up there. And I think that that's an important just connection to be aware of the partnerships amongst the community members in the school as well. So being able to, Miller-Groin Foundation and UWS Initiative, Jean Larson is on a committee that works with this initiative to be able to collaborate and be able to respond to needs directly affecting mental health and wellbeing. And then there's some of us from the, the district. I know Amy and myself have joined some community-type meetings to be able to talk about the, the work that they're doing right now, where they're at in the process. They have surveyed and identified needs within our community and now they're trying to implement some additional supports. And so there's more information out there from them as they're doing the work. However, how that affects us in the school district is being able to offer some educational options for some of the identified needs for mental health and wellbeing in our district amongst our students for prevention, but then also for staff and being able to find ways to be able to respond. There's some other pieces that they are working on and developing, but I only know like that much about it.
I think it goes back to your point, Ed, that I think the primary goal that they are focused on is how to expand services because not all students have access to those community agencies. And so how do we, how do we attract those providers here that may not be attracted to come into Wisconsin? So that's, that's one of the main areas they're looking at.
And the good thing is that the hospitals are also, and that's a big piece of it from.
Counties.
Able to go to.
Universities, yeah. Wide variety of stakeholders.
Because, yeah, there's the counseling department at UWS, so that was another area they were hoping to tap into, you know, but they have to be supervised, but at least being creative about the gaps that we have for the entire community.
Yeah, absolutely. That does conclude our presentation. Thank you for listening. It was supposed to be 10 minutes. I don't know if we went over. Sorry. We're pretty passionate about this. Thank you, Carrie. Are there other questions that any of you have? I mean, I know I would be happy to, to, you know, have additional conversations. Carrie would, you know, if things come up. But we hope to have updates that we've added more providers, especially, you know, to the schools that, that don't have as much support.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, same though.
Thanks.
All right. Our last update is from Erica Hutton Parker, our interim director of Student Services and Special Education on their third Friday special education count.
Good evening. So I just have a short informational update for everyone. So our fall count data, currently, we have 696 students who receive special education services. As you can see, this visual breaks it down by building and also eligibility area. Our teachers and staff worked very hard to get all of our data in the system as we have many transfers in this year. We are still seeing transfers in. So just know that this number is going to fluctuate throughout the year at any given time. Overall, as a district, our population of students who receive student qualification services is 16.47%. And if you look at the trend line data over the course of several years, our special education population is just on a downward trend along with our district enrollment. It just kind of mirrors that. So where we are this year compared to last year at this time, we are down 14 students.
What's the percentage compared from last year, you know? You said 16.47. What was it last year?
16.94.
So just a little bit less. Okay.
I'm sorry, 16.74 for this year. Last year, 16.94, so just down slightly.
Okay.
And so that's all I need to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee's report. With that, moving to Budget and Insurance Committee.
Me. We have one action item, gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in October of 2022 here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's. I have no discussion items and no informational items, so that concludes my report.
Yes, thank you. Next up, we'll have the Operations Committee with Steve Stupak.
Okay, I have no action items. I have no discussion items, but I do have some informational items from our building's grounds director, Bobby Matherley.
Evening, everybody. I'm already getting a little bit of hype over here on this topic, so that's good. It's going to be important for Mr. Aaron Johnson over there. Only because you represent the students of the high school, you're a senior, you're going to.
Carry all this information back.
You don't get to utilize what's coming down the pipe here. I'm sorry. So we're finalizing design on our, and I don't have a PowerPoint. We're finalizing design on our high school restroom addition. And tomorrow, ARI, myself, is going to be presenting to Amy and Shannon the design that, that's currently, that we currently have nailed down. We're going to go from, on the second floor, we're going to go from four toilets and two urinals. We're going to add nine toilets and five urinals.
Add or total?
Add.
Okay.
The total is 13 toilets and seven urinals. And obviously, this is, this is what our current design is. We're going to have to see, see budget numbers. You know, once we see budget numbers, then we'll have to go from there and possibly, you know, hopefully get everything installed because I've been up there during, during the changeover and it, and it's not good if you got to use the restroom. I'm sure Aaron can.
Yeah, there's also been a lot of feedback, even just this year already, that it's getting clogged up.
Yeah.
That was the second floor.
That's the second floor. So the third floor, we're gonna, we went from four toilets and two urinals. We're adding six toilets and two urinals. So that's going to give us 10 total toilets and four urinals. We finalized the design last week with the high school staff, the admin staff over there, just picking out, you know, finishing surfaces, colors and stuff like that. So tomorrow, we should hopefully have a little bit better understanding of the budget that's going to be involved in it. And then it, we're hoping that this, we can get this out to bid shortly after the contractors come back from deer season. Can be on the, the ticket for the start of summer next year. But not only that, we're really hoping to get some of those better bid costs done during the winter time instead of this time of year.
I can't remember. Is the second and third floor, do they mirror each other? So will it be the same or are they different?
It's going to be different.
Okay.
Yep.
There's some offices and things that are a little bit different on each floor that impact the design.
Yeah, we're taking over some spaces on the second floor.
That's right.
On the third floor, we're utilizing common.
Yep. Okay, that's right. Aaron did show us a little bit of the idea.
You got any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next up, we've got Policies and Rules Committee, Laura.
I have a handful of action items here, Mr. President. The first is Consideration of Resolution 22-04, Requirement of Nomination Paper/School Board Positions.
Move to approve?
Second.
We do this annually.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The second is the First Reading of Policy 5720 Regarding Student Activism. This is based on recommendations from NEOLA. You can see in green is a couple, just two minor detailed changes here.
Move to approve?
Second.
Just to point out again, last month, you guys looked at a, a group of policies recommended by NEOLA. This is just another set of policies for you to, to review out of that same volume of updates. Many of the updates that you're including this one might just be improved language.
Many of the updates that you're including this one might just be improved language, and I'll talk specifically about another one that talks about some statute that needs to be aligned. But this one's just changing the language.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the First Reading of Policy 5880 Regarding Public Performances by Students. Administration proposes the approved changes to this policy based on NEOLA recommendations.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? This is adding a sentence here and then including the word approves, cleaning up language again. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. The next is the First Reading of Policy 6152, Student Fees, Fines and Charges. Administration is proposing these changes to Policy 2430 based on NEOLA. Can I get a motion and second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, I noticed it's including the McKinney Vento, Vento Act information regarding students that are homeless and talking about not creating barriers for students in co-curricular activities or other fees regarding academic programming. And then adding cash handling, as you can see, for staff.
This is consistent with what we currently do.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion pass. The next is the First Reading of Policy 7450, Property Inventory. Administration approves, proposes, rather, approval of changes to this policy regarding NEOLA's recommendations. This was a larger one.
Move to approve.
Shannon, is there anything you want to say about this one?
This is just, I think, defining what we currently are doing. It's the $5,000 value in there. Just go back up to the top. Acquisition cost of anything that is either lower to greater, equal or greater than $5,000 value, just did some triggers.
It had some language around computers and technology devices, which we didn't have to.
In terms of the technology piece, we added technology. We compared those equipment purchases and tracking just what we currently.
Thank you. Any discussion questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next is the First Reading of Policy 8500, Food Services. Administration proposes the approval of these changes based on NEOLA recommendations. This is including discrimination policy or statutes that I saw. There was one question, oh, sorry, can I get a first?
Move to approve.
Thanks. One thing I noticed under Dietary Modifications, the second sentence, it says, must be submitted within, and then it doesn't say how many school days. So I just thought we should definitely have conversation around that as well.
With the parentheses.
Do we need to add that?
Yeah, we'll need to add that on the days that we require them to submit. That's that, sorry.
I'll add that for next week.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll talk to Jamie.
Yeah, that's a good idea to get his input on that.
And then if a student transfers in, that'll be different then? They can submit that when they transfer? If they, okay. And they'll be accommodated still?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we already do.
Yeah, it's X amount of school days from the time that the healthcare provider gives them the prescriptive dietary modification.
So we'll add the date for next week. Or dates, I should say.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. The next is the First Reading of Policy 9270, Home-Based Private or Tribal Schooling. Again, administration is proposing these changes based on NEOLA recommendations. Move to approve.
Second.
This aligns with current state environments around homeschool students.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. I do not have any discussion items or informational items this evening.
All right, thank you, Laura. With that, we'll go into the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. Mike's not here, so I'll take it. Couple of action items tonight. First one is the Administration recommends approval of the November 2022 New Hires, Transfers and Separations reports as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion?
Welcome to all the new hires.
Yeah. No other discussion then? Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, the Administration recommends the updating the following job descriptions in the Support Staff category, English Learner EL Assistant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just looking at Molly, see if she had anything to say.
We, I work with Carrie on this. We just updated, we had to move post for another position. And this was aligning with the DPI standards for an English learner position. We've had not updated the job description for a while.
Yeah, so I consulted with other districts and DPI updated their English Learner Policy Handbook. They have a comprehensive handbook, and that was done in January of 2020, so that definitely needed.
And this is a result of increased students enrolled in the ELL program, correct?
The number's doubled, so we have 24, we dropped last year, 24 this year, and we need several are newcomers. So it's, it's a big shift for us.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
So is this posted already after we approved this? Or, I mean, will it be after?
We have it, we posted it already.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
You can't act on it until you approve it, but.
Yeah.
You can't hire it.
Right. We didn't hire.
They'll collect resumes. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There are no discussion items, no informational items. So that will conclude the Personnel Negotiator Committee's report. Last, we've got the Legislative Committee with Ed.
There are no action items, no discussion items, some informational items. First off, Record State Surplus Confirms Should Enable More School Funding in Next State Budget. State of Wisconsin ended its fiscal year on June 30th, 2022 with a record positive balance of $4.3 billion, according to the new state annual fiscal report released today by the State Department of Administration. That report also confirms that Wisconsin has a record $1.73 billion in its Budget Stabilization Fund, the Rainy Day Fund. You can click there and read the article. Second, DPI releases district certified 2022, '23 general school aid amounts. Department of Public Instruction released certified state general school aid amounts that each school district will receive during the current 2022, '23 school year. By law, the DPI must certify these aid amounts by October 15th each year. You can click to read the article. Both those articles are taken from law speed legislative updates, and you can click on link and look at those yourself as well. And that's, I guess.
All right, that's it. That takes care of all of the committees. Any comments by members of the public tonight?
You sure? A couple.
No.
All right. If not, then the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I would have remembered.
Yeah, eventually, right.
I can like follow. That was long, that was borrowed.
I get it.